Another piece where you come up with a train is all going to be worked on and blocked off. It's so much, you can't believe it. It is. But coming through customs, I didn't think that building was done yet. That part of it wasn't done.
Yeah, because she told me it was like, uh, looks like it's very much still.
Hello, can we do a quick sound check? Say something again, Paul?
I can hear you, Joe.
Yes, we're gonna hear you. Thank you.
That's where departures are, right? That's done and arrivals. See all these big machines, they have all these, there's like fifteen of them. This is all security, right? The whole width of the-
And I assume that we're on YouTube?
Thank you. I kept saying if anybody could hear me because I couldn't see anybody to-
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Thank you for being here, commissioners. Just let me know that you're here, those that are online. All right. Hi there. Commissioner Dick and Ruiz. We're about sixty seconds from start time. And I assume that we're on YouTube? Thank you. Sorry, I wasn't listening good enough. And we are at exactly one thirty, so, uh, welcome everyone. This is the hearing and action portion of the planning commission meeting for October twenty first, twenty twenty five. We are going to start with a roll call, uh, for commissioners. Commissioner Blackwell. Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dick.
Here.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammy. Oh, here, hi. Uh, thank you, Commissioner Maza. Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Thank you, Commissioner Cantonia. Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz. Thank you, and Commissioner Wu. Thank you. All right, now we've got commissioners, we are going to go through today's agenda. Clearly, we had no items for briefing. This is hearing and action only. Agenda item A, approval of minutes. Agenda item B, correspondence. Agenda item C, plan of lots. Agenda item D, hearing and action, part one, uh, hearing and action, part two, and then agenda item E, which is the director's report. Moving to agenda item A, which is approval of minutes. Commissioners, we have two sets of minutes, we'll take them separately. Do we have a motion from the floor if there are no edits for September twenty third, twenty twenty five?
So moved.
All right, Commissioner Cantonia moved, a second by Commissioner Dick. I'll do roll call. Commissioner, uh, Blackwell. Thank you and welcome. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick. Thank you, Commissioner Gammy. Thank you, Commissioner Maza. Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Thank you, Commissioner Cantonia. Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz. Thank you, and Commissioner Wu. All right, uh, moving on to, uh, the second set of minutes for approval for October seventh, twenty twenty five. If there are no edits, do I have a motion from the floor to approve? Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Do I have a second? Uh, who was the second? My apologies. Thank you, Commissioner Blackwell. Uh, now we're gonna do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell. Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick. Thank you, Commissioner Gammy. Thank you, Commissioner Maza. Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Thank you, Commissioner Cantonia. Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz. Thank you, and Commissioner Wu. Thank you. All right, moving on to correspondence. Today, we are in receipt of correspondence. Re DCP dash MPZC dash twenty twenty five dash zero zero two three zero, regarding Council Bill twenty twenty four dash oh nine five nine zoning text amendment for signs in the North Shore Entertainment District, uh, from specifically scenic Pittsburgh, and that is from, uh, David Demko. That concludes the correspondence. We'll move on to agenda item C, which is plan of lots. I'm gonna read through the three and then, um, move to item number one. Under plan of lots, item number one, uh, we have, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty five dash zero zero two five three. Uh, second item under plan of lots, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty five dash zero zero two four one. Item number three under plan of lots, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty five dash zero zero two four four. Moving to item number one under plan of lots, Ms. Kryeski will be presenting, that is, DCP. Are we taking these separately or together? Nope, Mr. Shepke.
I'll be presenting today and, um, we can do the first one and then items two and three can be grouped.
All right, fantastic. And, uh, that's Mr. Shepke. Let me fix that. Goes to show I wasn't looking up. Item number one, DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty five dash zero zero two five three, at seventy sixty one Leamington Avenue. This is a major subdivision in the Lincoln-Leamington-Belmar neighborhood. Mr. Shepke?
Thank you. Uh, this is the, uh, seventy sixty one Leamington Avenue subdivision. It's the proposed subdivision of one parcel into two parcels. The proposed lot one would have frontage on Churchland Street and would be forty thousand one hundred and nine square feet in area. Lot two would have frontage on Leamington Avenue and it would be seventy nine thousand six hundred and forty six square feet in area. A school building is located on the subject property and the, uh, proposed motion is to, uh, preliminarily approve the seventy sixty one Leamington Avenue subdivision with final review scheduled for November fourth, twenty twenty five.
All right, thank you so much. Um, there isn't anyone here to speak on this matter. Commissioners, the item before us is a preliminary, uh, motion with a final to come before us November four, twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion from the floor? Thank you, Commissioner Dick. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Cantonia, and I'll do order. Uh, Commissioner Blackwell. Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick. Thank you, Commissioner Gammy. Thank you, Commissioner Maza. Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Thank you, Commissioner Cantonia. Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz. Thank you, and Commissioner Wu. All right. Okay, so we're gonna take items two and three, we're gonna batch them together, so I'll read them both in. Item number two is DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty five dash zero zero two four one at forty six twelve Lidle Street. This is a major subdivision in the Hazelwood neighborhood. Item number three is DCP dash lot dash twenty twenty five dash zero zero two four four, at one twenty first street. This is a major consolidation in the strip district neighborhood. We're passing it over to Mr. Shepke.
Thank you. Um, this is the four, six, one, two Lidle Street subdivision. It is the proposed subdivision of one parcel into three parcels. Parcel J three second revised would have frontage on Lidle Street, Hazelwood Avenue and Blair Street. It would be a hundred and seventy seven thousand one hundred and seventy square feet in area. Parcel J three B would have frontage on Eliza Street and would be seventeen thousand eight hundred ninety four square feet in area. Parcel J three C would have frontage on Blair Street and Eliza Street and would be twenty one thousand six hundred seventy one square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant. Uh, the applicant proposes to construct a multi-unit residential building on the subject property. This is a major subdivision that was first reviewed by the planning commission on October seventh, twenty twenty five, and the recommended motion is to approve the Lidle Street subdivision. Uh, the last item on plan of lots is the one twenty first street consolidation plan. This is the proposed consolidation of three parcels into one parcel. The proposed parcel A would have frontage on twenty first street and would be a hundred and fifty nine thousand seven hundred and thirty square feet in area. A one-story warehouse building is located on the subject property and the recommended motion is to approve the one twenty first street consolidation plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepke. Uh, we're gonna open the floor. There's no one in the room, but I don't know if there's anyone online that would like to speak on either matter. Um, if not, we'll take these together. Commissioners, do I have a motion to approve, uh, items two and three?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. Do I have a second? Commissioner Cantonia is the second. Uh, I'll do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell. Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick. Thank you, Commissioner Gammy. Thank you, Commissioner Maza. Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil. Thank you, Commissioner Cantonia. Aye, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ruiz. Thank you, and Commissioner Wu. Thank you. All right, so, uh, the motion passes. Thank you so much, Mr. Shepke. We're moving on to agenda item D. Hearing and action, and this is hearing and action, part one. Number one is DCP dash ZDR dash twenty twenty three dash zero zero six zero five, at one seventy seven Baker Square Boulevard. This is a bakery square television screen in the East Liberty neighborhood, and Mr. Fraker will be presenting.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I will read in the, uh, the case and then turn it over to the applicant team for the presentation. Final land development plan application, DCP ZDR twenty twenty three zero zero six zero five was filed by Goldberg, Cayman, and Garvin on behalf of Bakery Square Holdings, property owner for use of an outdoor television screen in the courtyard space of one fifty four Bakery Square. The television is considered an accessory structure and not a sign by the zoning code. As such, it is being reviewed as an accessory structure. The applicant described that they were not aware that the proposed television screen would require permitting, so permits were not originally applied for back in twenty twenty two. The project was then cited by permits, licenses, and inspections for not having had zoning approval, and the applicant was found guilty at the magistrate district court. The case has since been continued at the summary appeals court. The zoning administrator determined that the project should be reviewed as a final land development plan, given the proximate impact on the public realm. The television screen is approximately a hundred and sixty square feet, and the accessory structure height is twelve feet four inches. A development activities meeting was held with the layer American Census Group on September four. A copy of the DAM report is attached to your, uh, hearing report. The application was reviewed at staff design review and staff did not have significant feedback on the project and no urban design targets were issued. With that, the recommended motion is that the planning commission of the city of Pittsburgh approves the final land development plan, DCP ZDR twenty twenty three zero zero six zero five, with the conditions that the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure shall review and approve all domi permits and construction management plan prior to issuing the record of zoning approval and the final record, and the final construction plans, including site plans and elevation, shall be reviewed and approved by the zoning administrator prior to issuing the record of zoning approval. Thank you, and I'll turn it over to the applicant team now.
So, good afternoon, commissioners. I'm John Cayman and I'm counsel for Walnut Capital and Bakery Square. As Joe told you in the background, we did not believe and continue to not believe that a permit is necessary for basically our outdoor television. As many of you know, uh, who have been to Bakery Square, the television has been there since twenty twenty two. But as a compromise, uh, with city planning, we decided to come through the process to go ahead and, and get this done as an FLDP. So, can we go to the next slide, please? But this is just an overall aerial overview of Bakery Square. The area that we're talking about is where the existing screen is located on, uh- The area that we're talking about is where the existing screen is located on sort of our green area right in front of City Kitchen. Next slide, please. This is a little bit more of a zoom in. You can see the green area that we have, the turf, and the screen is located sort of adjacent to the right turn, right where the arrow is. Thank you, Joe. Next screen, please. Next slide, please. This is an overhead view of the existing screen and condition, and again, you can see where it's located. Next slide, please. Basically, how this is used is as an outdoor television screen. We do not use it for any sign or advertising purposes. We do use it to host movie nights, game day events, and seasonal celebrations at the Bakery Square outdoor area, and that does include, you know, the broadcasting of games, Steeler games, Pirate games, Penguin games, you know, other items of significance. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. These are just some shots of everything in motion, and this is Wicked that was playing on the screen. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the front of the screen. As you can see, it is directed directly at our courtyard and not directed towards the roads in any way, and is barely visible, other than, you know, the fact that you can see that there's some color coming from it. It's not visible from the right of ways. Next slide, please. This is the backside of the screen. As you can see, it's just blacked out, and again, that so is to not create any distraction for the drivers driving by and also the drivers who are coming in our site access drive. Next slide, please. These are dimension engineered dimensions of what was actually constructed. Next slide, please. Is that our last one, Joe? Great. So, at this point, what we're asking for is approval of the screen, I guess, the continued existence of the television screen facing the courtyard. Again, everybody knows how it's going to look because it's there, and it's an existing amenity, and we're happy to go ahead and take any questions the planning may have at this point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Caiman, for the presentation. At this time, we would open the floor for public testimony. There isn't anybody in the room. Not sure if there's anyone online. No one online. All right, great. So, Commissioners, are there any questions or comments?
I would just like to make a motion to approve to get this thing over with.
Fantastic. So, we're going to.
I have one question, and I'm sorry. In terms of the video screen, I don't have any questions about that, but is there a sign on the back of the video screen?
So, there is a, just a, I believe there's just a Bakery Square logo on it, which you can see sort of faintly in this picture.
Yeah, I mean, from this screen, it's a little hard to see. I just kind of see the black, so that was, that was the follow-up. And that has a sign permit?
I believe that it's waiting on this to be completed.
Okay. No further questions. Thank you.
And my apologies, Commissioner O'Neil. Were there any other comments from any Commissioners? All right, so we do have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Mazza. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gammy.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mazza.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neil.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Cantinia.
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruiz.
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu.
Aye.
All right, thank you. The motion passes. Have a great rest of your day. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, moving on to Hearing and Action Part Two. We would start that at 2:00 P. M. Oh, we're not quite there. Okay, well, we're going to have intermission here until 2:00 P. M. I'm just rolling right along. We'll see everybody at 2:00. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're gonna get ready to get started here in just a moment. Uh, just making sure the court reporter is still with us.
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, thank you so much. All right, commissioners, just turn on your, uh, or signal that you're with us. Just to make sure, we're gonna kick it back into gear for the second portion of today. Uh, so welcome back, everybody. Intermission is over. We are, uh, on October twenty first, twenty twenty five, under, uh, hearing and action, part two. Uh, I will read in the items that will be before us. Uh, that is agenda item two is Council Bill twenty twenty five dash nineteen twenty five, zoning code text amendment regarding application approval deadlines citywide. And then item number three, Council Bill twenty twenty five dash nineteen twenty six, zoning code text amendment regarding application completeness determination deadlines. And that would be citywide as well. I'm going to then turn that over, uh, to Mr. Lehman. And when he is ready and there are, uh, no glitches, then we'll be right with you. One moment, please, and thank you. There are some technical issues. Give us just a moment. Thank you, thank you. Still working on that technical, so no, no rush. I just wanna let people know where we are. All right, Mr. Lehman is coming.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Apologies for the delay. Council Bill twenty twenty five nineteen twenty five was sent to planning commission for a report and recommendation on June eighteenth, twenty twenty five. And the legislation creates a new section called, uh, in section nine twenty two oh one, number E, or letter E, approval deadlines. Um, this, uh, legislation requires that the body or planning agency must review applications excluding city council, render its decision and communicate it to the applicant no later than ninety days following a specific starting point, depending on the next meeting date or the thirtieth day after an application is deemed complete. The legislation also requires a written decision to be provided to the applicant personally or mailed to him at last known address within fifteen days of the decision. If an application is not approved, the decision shall specify what is incorrect or missing and cite the relevant code provisions. If the deciding body does not make a decision and communicate it to the applicant, the application is approved, regardless of whether it complies with the zoning code. Much of the text of this bill is taken from section five oh eight within article five of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code. This part of the MPC applies only to subdivision plats. Articles six and nine are the portions of the MPC that apply to zoning. While Article nine does establish timelines for zoning board and conditional use application decisions, it does not establish this kind of approval deadline for all applications. Pittsburgh is exempted from the MPC as a municipality of the second class and already has established timelines for ZBA and conditional use decisions. And this legislation would potentially conflict with those timelines. The legislation requires a ninety day mandatory decision timeline based on the following data. One that the date and one is the date that an application is deemed to be complete. The second is the date of the meeting that follows the deemed completion. Third is the date that the application is filed. And finally, thirty days from the date that the application has been filed. Presently, the city only regularly uses and tracks the date from that, that the application is filed. The date that an application is deemed complete is an important and necessary date only in rare instances in determining whether an application is impacted by penning ordinance. Requiring this additional data to be tracked and implemented for every application will likely require a one-stop permitting system to be modified. Um, and the ability to make those modifications hasn't been studied, uh, and the associated cost is unknown. The bill states that it applies to all applications for approval other than those governed by state or federal law and public hearings conducted under section nine twenty two oh five E of the zoning code, whether preliminary or final, which amounts to approximately three thousand applications annually. The bill doesn't differentiate between types of applications, which can range in scale from a fence or shed to a large multi-story commercial development and institutional master plans. It does not clearly define the process for applications that aren't decided at a regular meeting of the body or the planning agency because they are simple by right applications. The bill is unclear regarding the relationship between this mandatory timing and other notice and hearing periods established in the city code relating to significant developments, including public notice and hearing requirements and development activities meeting requirements in areas where there is a registered community organization. City planning is recommending a negative recommendation, uh, recommending that planning commission makes a negative recommendation on this council bill. I do have a quick presentation that if you were here for the briefing, you'll recall. I'm gonna try to go through that quickly. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna go now. Just quickly, I wanted to put together, uh, an explanation of our review process, uh, as it relates to these two bills. When an application is submitted, we have what's called a completeness check. That's done by PLI, and that is, um, i- in its own way, uh, a way of making sure an application is minimally complete. The timeline for that is typically one day every once in a while. If it's later in the afternoon, it might, uh, be two days, but the typical timeline is, is just a day for the city to review that and make a response to the application. And then for a basic zoning review, uh, we have an expected completion. So we already have timelines for, uh, sort of deadlines for our reviews, which are called, um, SLAs, which are service level agreements. It's essentially the service that we provide to our applicants. So we agree to review it in, in no more than fifteen days. The average completion time for a basic zoning review is six days. Then the next step, uh, often is that applications are put into revisions. And this is where, um, in the ongoing meetings that we've had with, uh, we continue to have with PLI and DOMI, um, and city leadership to try to continue to find ways to optimize and streamline the process. One of the, one of the goals we would like to have is to have more applications that are complete right away. Because every time we have to send an application back to an applicant, you can see on average that spends over thirty days, uh, waiting for a response. Um, that might be time that an applicant is preparing plans or, um, but a lot of times it's just there's, there's just a delay. It takes time for them to get their stuff together in order to get it back to us. Um, and so that's where, uh, the, if we, if we were able to eliminate the revisions, we'd have a process that would take six days instead of thirty or forty, you know, on average. So, um, this is a part, this is a little window into the work that's ongoing to try to continue to make applications and our application process more efficient. Um, and certainly that efficient helps us as well. That efficiency helps us. So it's a shared goal we have with, with developers. Um, for complex applications, we're talking about major projects, the ones that are more often likely to end up at planning commission. There is understandably a longer process. It has more iterations. It has opportunity for public input. Um, so most of those applications start with a pre-application meeting. And then, uh, we help the applicant, this is an effort, the pre-application meeting is an effort to provide the applicant with the tools to have the most complete and efficient application. So to have less, uh, additional reviews. And it's also a way to make sure the applicant understands what the process is going forward. Um, and then so we still have the same application submittal and completeness check by PLI. Then we have an initial zoning review that our team completes to set up the application and make sure everybody's on the same page as to what the next steps are. Um, there's, uh, typically some sort of community process, whether that's a development activities meeting or just a regular community meeting. Um, and then we get an application that has, uh, responds to the feedback from that process. And then we have a whole bunch of reviews that are happening, happening simultaneously. Zoning reviews, DOMI reviews, uh, there's a design review. Uh, that's where an application gets some of that initial feedback. Um, and secondary feedback, uh, that's a more comprehensive stage of review. Uh, similar to basic applications, then typically there's a point where we're sending it back to the applicant for revisions. Um, it's actually on complex applications, the, it's about the same, but it's thirty one days instead of thirty two. Um, typical applicants for these more complex applications are more, more, um, experienced applicants. Um, there's, uh, typically a CDAP process. Uh, and then potentially another stage of reviews responding to CDAP. And then there's sort of the final stage of zoning and related reviews to make sure that we have everything that we need to bring it to planning commission. Um, so, uh, in that case, that would be the stormwater management plans. That would be the transportation, traffic plans, all of that, the sort of comprehensive type of review so that we can bring an informed recommendation to the planning commission. Uh, then you have the planning commission, and then after planning commission, you have, uh, a final review. And then we have, uh, at that point, the construction drawings that are being reviewed for, um, and, and our review is just to make sure that the construction drawings are consistent with what planning commission approves. Um, this has been, uh, the process for quite a while, but we've created a lot of efficiencies over the years, particularly with the application system. That is not to say that the process is perfect. Um, I and our customers and our staff all agree that there are opportunities for more efficiency and for more predictability. Um, we have been going through a, a number of processes as a city over the years. And I've been with the city for nineteen years. I have seen, I've been under four mayors, going on five. Um, started with one O'Connor. I'm going to be at the next O'Connor. Um, and we have been cutting ribbons and doing grand openings and launching process improvements every single mayor administration. It's something that we have to continually work on because it's complicated. These are complicated systems. Uh, the dynamics and the challenges and constraints that the developers and contractors and other application applicants feel uh, range quite a bit. And so we're always trying to learn from peer cities, trying to innovate, trying to create the best possible process for Pittsburgh. I just wanted to show the ZBA cases per year graph, uh, is just an example of one of the types of ways that we've tried to improve the process for our applicants. So when I came in as zoning administrator in twenty fourteen, uh, going into twenty fifteen, we had a really high level of zoning board cases. Um, and that was, and that, and those were growing. You can see it kind of shooting up, uh, from twenty fourteen to twenty sixteen. Um, and in that time period, there were so many cases that the board had to add extra meetings, um, both in the, early in the morning and in the afternoon. There was a waiting list that was several months long to even be able to get to start scheduling a zoning board meeting. And we said, well, what can we do? And so we went through and we used a data-based approach. So we took data from all of our zoning board cases over the last ten years or whatever the iteration was. And we studied, or what are the kinds of cases that have had like a hundred percent or ninety-nine or ninety-eight percent approval rate from the zoning board? Can we change those from having to go to the zoning board to something that was an administrative exception or some other easier, quicker, more efficient process? Um, and so we made those changes and you can see the graph shoot down. Um, then in twenty twenty, of course, there's a dip in twenty twenty during COVID. Everything dipped. Uh, as things started coming back, we said, hey, it's time to look again. And let's do a second round and see if there are other areas that we can make improvements. And so in twenty twenty one, we, we made another, uh, round of zoning board approvals and, um, or zoning board or changes related to our zoning board data. And that reduced the impact on the zoning board all the way down to twenty twenty five, where we sometimes have uh, only a handful of cases on a zoning board agenda. Um, there is no delay at all to schedule a hearing. And we're going for round number three. So our staff are currently, uh, looking again to see if we can make it even more efficient because it saves the city money, saves our applicants money. It saves the city time, saves our staff time, and it saves our applicants time. So we are all in on process optimization and on making changes to improve the process for everyone. In fact, we have, uh, in twenty twenty six, we'll be launching our customer advisor program, uh, fully, uh, which is another innovation that we've been working on, uh, that helps our applicants that are the applicants that tend to struggle the most. So we provide basically hands-on customer service for the, for that group of applicants. Um, so that, uh, our other reviewers who aren't handholding are able to have, uh, predictable and consistent applications that move really quickly. So my message to the commission, my message to city council is that we are willing partners. Uh, we are willing collaborators. Uh, we know that we're going into a new administration. We know that they're gonna have goals related to this. We're here and, and ready to work. Um, and our only request is that we do that together, um, so that it's informed that, and so it works for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Mr. Carter.
Thank you. My name is Sean Carter. I am the Legislative Projects Manager for Pittsburgh City Council. Madam Chairwoman, Madam Vice Chair, commissioners, thank you for having me. Um, thank you, Mr. Zoning Administrator, for previewing the bill. This is City Council Bill two zero two five dash nineteen twenty five, uh, zoning code text amendments for approval deadlines presented by City Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith from Council District Two. And so again, these are the changes to application review and approval deadlines. It will require that the reviewing body, whether it's the zoning administrator, the planning commission, the city council, or the ZBA, render their final decision on preliminary, for instance, preliminary land development plans or final approvals, and communicate that decision within ninety days following the date of the board or agency meeting, which immediately follows the date the application is deemed complete by the zoning administrator. So for instance, so we can map that out in like days on the calendar. If the zoning administrator deems an application complete on, say, Thursday, September the twenty fifth, and that particular form of approval has a ninety day clock, then the next planning commission meeting from September the twenty fifth is Tuesday, October the seventh. That triggers the ninety day clock. So the deadline for the commission to render a decision is January the fifth, twenty twenty six. Um, and as I said in the briefing, there's a, there's a time gap that would have to be worked out in the legislation to make sure that where the commission doesn't have a meeting because of a holiday or something that, you know, some applicant's not getting a freebie because of Christmas or because of New Year's. So that's a minor tweak that has to be worked out in the legislation, and I acknowledged that at the briefing, and that remains the case today. Um, what's not affected is the hundred and twenty day deadline for city council to hold a public hearing on zoning map and text amendments under the zoning code because hundred and twenty days is longer than ninety days. Most other approvals in the zoning code do not span beyond ninety days. So when you look in the zoning code, it's like pretty much ninety days is the largest one you're gonna find, except this one, which is a hundred and twenty days for council to hold the public hearing after the planning commission submits a recommendation to it. So that's unaffected. And generally, as it process noted, is not the intention of the sponsor of this legislation to constrict the pre-existing approval deadlines in the zoning code. In fact, the legislation says, and I wish I had put it on the slide, that, um, decisions are to be rendered within the code's pre-existing time limits, but in no case longer than ninety days. So for instance, the zoning board generally has forty-five days to render a decision after the close of the record. So this would not constrict the zoning boards forty-five days. I could understand an argument that says it unnecessarily prolongs the forty-five days, but it certainly doesn't constrict it. And this is a provision that is used in some MPC municipalities for different types of approvals. And so it's not exactly a one-for-one correlation with Pittsburgh and Philadelphia, but you understand the principle. It's about speeding up some of the review process and giving some certainty to applicants that for these classes of approvals, this is your hard stop. Um, let's see. However, Pittsburgh is a restrictive development environment due to its topography, the rivers, its densely built urban environment, the active participation of us, the residents and land use processes. Regulatory requirements. I mean, those stormwater requirements are necessary. I mean, we're under an EPA consent decree to pull the stormwater out of our waterways. So that's not something we can overlook. We've got to find a way to keep the water off the impervious surfaces. Everybody's got to participate in that. Does that cause, um, some burdens? Yes, but I think living together in a dense urban environment, those are the types of things we just have to do. But we're not alone. We have external constraints. Right now, interest rates are through the roof. Labor costs are through the roof. Materials costs are through the roof. We have tremendous market uncertainty, both domestically and with, um, the import-export environment. So there are a number of different factors that lead to developments being either stymied or in fact stopped by, um, things outside of our control. We can't control any of these factors, uh, at least not as a government. And so the thing we can control is the process by which we review and approve applications when someone comes to us and say, I want to build X. when someone comes to us and say, I want to build X, I want to do Y. And again, like I said, one of the potential amendments we identified prior to the briefing was to provide for situations where the expiration of the ninety days occurs less than seven days before a meeting, to make sure that there isn't this freebie gap where if applicant times it right, they're almost guaranteed to get an approval regardless of the conformity of their application to the zoning code. And I do want to just, if the chair will indulge me, point, respond to a couple of things brought up by the zoning administrator. I think largely this doesn't apply to ZBA cases because that's when someone's asking for relief from strict conformity with the zoning code. And this doesn't interfere with the zoning board's work. And the other, I would say in terms of exempting classes of law or classes of large, complex project applications whose approval process is already take longer than ninety days. I think a better approach would be to condition a positive approval on exempting that class of projects from the strictures of this ordinance, not rejecting or recommending negatively this ordinance altogether. Because aside from that twenty percent of projects, which necessarily, if you've got to go through DOME and PLI and CDAP and maybe the Art Commission and maybe multiple rounds, maybe it's one of those split approvals where part of it has to get approved by the ZBA and then another part of it has to get approved by the planning commission. And then, you know, you look at your SP districts where some of it then has to come to city council. There, there is an argument to exempt those large projects from this ordinance, but the other eighty percent, I don't see why this presents that unhonorous a burden. And yeah, that's what I have unless the commissioners or the public has any questions.
Okay, I think if that completes your presentation, thank you. And I appreciate the additional point of trying to have some clarity at the end there. Is, I know there's no one in the room here. Is there anybody online as it, no? Okay. Because we have to offer, offer that first. You know, commissioners, now's our time to sort of ask some questions. And, and I have one myself, if it's okay commissioners, you know, for me to sort of ask this one, and I know this might be slightly silly. So the example that you gave at the end, I greatly appreciated, right? Because if we've got something that comes before the zoning board, the zoning board has to, you know, it has to get on the schedule. Then once it's on the schedule, we get forty-five days after in which to render a decision. Has there been communication between council and, and staff in terms of, you know, efficiency? Like Corey, you had shown the graph and, and kind of looked at, you know, what came before zoning and how changes were able to make an impact and, and we were sort of able to, to make some better efficiencies. Has there been conversation between council and staff to really look at places where efficiencies could be? Because I recognize that, that what is being proposed right now, there are those time glitches that might fall between holidays and recess. And I, I, I'm just questioning how much work has been done to, kind of together to sort of look at that? Has there been any? Or I guess that's for both of you, Corey and Mr. Carter, Mr. Lehman and Mr. Carter, both? Please and thank you.
I would say we haven't gotten around to that. We've got a full plate with a bunch of other issues council has sent your way, and we just honestly haven't been able to schedule the time to get it done. At least I'm talking about from my side.
Okay.
There hasn't been a disinclination to me. We just haven't been able to get it together.
And, and I only asked that and I, and I, that's why I said this may be kind of a silly question, but I, I only asked that because I, I think that it appears clear to me that both sides might really want the same thing. And I am just trying to figure out with a little bit of conversation how that couldn't work and, and everybody kind of get what they're, what they're trying to achieve. The, the end game and the end goal is to create efficiency and less time. And I, and I'm feeling like I'm, I'm hearing that on both ends, that that's, that's a goal for both. And so I don't know, I don't necessarily know what to do with that, but I just wanted to ask that so that that can help to inform some of my thought throughout this. Commissioners, are there additional, you know, comments? I don't, I don't want my question to be the only. And online as well, commissioners. Vice Chair O'Neill, oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Wu? All right. Yeah, I think I spoke last time on, you know, what I, what I basically do every day at my job as a planner is, is working in the MPC. You know, most of our clients are small townships, small boroughs. They may have one planning commission meeting a month. Sometimes they don't even meet every month. They'll have one board of supervisors or one borough commission meeting a month. So, and, and they also have, you know, far fewer large development proposals proposed at, at those meetings. So the, the legislation, the 2025, 1925, section nine twenty-two dot oh one. The, you know, with those approval deadlines kind of, you know, replicating the, the language from the municipality's planning code, section five oh eight, as, as Mr. Lehman discussed. You know, it, it, it's, it means that the timeline is going to be even quicker in, in Pittsburgh than it would be in these communities because, you know, we have, we have council meetings twice a month. We have, or, or even, no, is it weekly? I don't even know. And then planning commission, we have, you know, twice, twice a month. So, you know, if, if it's ninety days following the date of the regular meeting of the body or the planning agency next following the date the application is deemed complete, that means the timeline's probably going to be quicker here in the city than it would be in, you know, these smaller communities have, have to follow the, the MPC. So also, as Mr. Lehman mentioned, the MPC doesn't have clocks for completeness of applications. Those are things that, that the individual municipalities will put in their own subdivision or land development ordinances or zoning ordinances. So, you know, having a clock here where we say it has to be, you know, within thirty days of receipt of an application deemed to complete. I, I have a hard time, you know, being, you know, not, not being a little wary of that, given that, you know, how, how many large applications we have here that go before a commission, you know, whether it's a, let's say the Lower Hill PLDP, you know? We wouldn't want that to, to to potentially be approved without, you know, community input, without, you know, all the, all the requirements, you know, the, the, the development activities, meaning CDAP, you know, DOME, et cetera. And I, I, I used to, you know, I, I used to work at DCP and I, I used to schedule all the dams and, you know, it was hard enough finding a, you know, a, a window of time with, with, you know, with numbers of days before planning commission hearings or a number of days before city council to find a time to get those meetings scheduled. Because, you know, sometimes you have five registered community organizations or, you know, any number of registered community organizations in the area, and you have to coordinate with all of those, those folks to, to find a time that's agreeable to everyone. And then there's the, you know, there's also the time limit between, you know, when a dam takes place and when a hearing takes place. That, that's also specified in, in the code. So, you know, I, I think, you know, kind of having this blanket, these blankets approval requirements for all different types of developments that come through the, the department, I, I think is, you know, might not lead to the results that we want. So I, you know, when, when Mr. Lehman went through the presentation, you know, discussing the, the number of days that typically takes for a completeness check for basic zoning review, you know, complex applications, resub, resubmital, you know, times, you know, we, we, we get a ton of applications in the city, more, more than most of the, the small boroughs and townships. So I don't think that, I don't think that's in any interest of the department to want to prolong something longer than it has to be, because that just means there's a backlog of applications to be reviewing. So, yeah, I, I mean, I, I, I think there needs to be a lot more work done to this legislation for me to be, you know, satisfied with, with the language in it at, at this moment.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Sure. Thank you. So thank you for, you know, coming back with this legislation. I think I echo a lot of Commissioner Wu's comments, having worked in a lot of MPC jurisdictions. You know, it is tight, some of that scheduling. It's something we back into all of the time and have to look at how many days in advance. It, it gets very complicated sometimes. And I think that's my overarching concern here, you know, is somebody who isn't a zoning expert and isn't doing this every day should be able to look at the code and know, you know, what their expectations are. And when we have conflicting provisions, so for example, saying that you have up to ninety days here, but, you know, the zoning board, even though it starts from a different period, is forty-five days from the date of the hearing to render a decision. There's potential for confusion. So as somebody who's an expert, you can point to, you know, the section of the zoning code that says the more restrictive provision complies. But if I'm a layperson, I'm going to look and I, maybe I only see the ninety days. And then I don't know, you know, which one applies. I shouldn't have to look multiple places to know what the deadlines are and schedule. So I think if there's going to be, you know, a clock on some of these applications, which it seems like the intention here is for, you know, mostly PDPs and subdivisions, it should be in those sections specifically. You know, here, the drafting makes it a little bit confusing. And then as far as kind of schedule, I think the ZBA is a really good example because it's not quite as simple as just forty-five days. Because, you know, and I'll speak on behalf of myself when I come in. If I have an application, a lot of them that have to go to the ZBA have to go to an RCO. So I need to submit that application to city planning at least ten days before an RCO meeting because they need to review and comment if it's going to be meaningful. And then the RCO has to hold their meeting at least thirty days in advance of a ZBA hearing.
Correct.
And some of them only hold them once a month. So if I don't hit it on the right date, I'm waiting up to forty-five days just to get my RCO meeting. And then I have to go to the zoning board and then they have forty-five days. So we're already over ninety days. So what gets curtailed there is either the ZBA's decision or the RCR's review. And both of those are, you know, very impactful. These are quasi judicial decisions that require, you know, community input and ZBA expertise. So while it's not the effect or the intended effect to limit that process, it is entirely possible. So I, I think just the way it is written currently makes it too confusing to enforce and maybe is counterintuitive. I think that there could be redrafting. Specifically, my recommendation would be to, you know, amend the specific provisions of the code that you would like to limit that aren't in conflict with other provisions. So not with the ZBA provisions, if it's going to be PDP approval, PLDP approval, FLDP, those kind of things that should be in those specific sections. So it's clear to everybody reading the code what the expectations are. Because we don't want to kind of cut short, you know, those RCO processes. And, you know, we want to have meaningful input from everybody involved.
Yeah, I think that's definitely, if I can echo them, them both and kind of bring it full circle to where I started, I think that's kind of why I asked the question initially in terms of a, a sit down maybe, you know, together so that, you know, almost like the timeline, I, I, I value exactly what it is that you're looking for. And, and, and I personally directly appreciate it so much so, and I, I get where you want to go. I, I think that there can be, I, I think that there could be an opportunity to meet the, the goal and, and the objectives here. I just think there needs to be a little more communication and sort of getting there, you know, collectively. Because I, I, I think that they're saying that, that, what you're proposing and what we're trying to achieve internally and that we as the public are also trying to achieve externally are the exact same thing. I just think there needs to be a little more communication. And I'm hesitant to say chalk it up. I, I'd like to see a little bit of a, you know, some, some time and some, some effort put in conversation. Now, conversation never means consensus. It just means conversation and let's settle on a few things that make sense. Because if you, if you move something forward and there's a lot of conflict, whether it's ZBA, whether it's holiday, you know, August recess, there's no reason to move something if with holes and things that you have to amend anyway. I think that we could get a lot more mileage and a lot more benefit and a great outcome if there's some communication and that's sort of worked through collectively. I know that's never fun in terms of just meaning delay, because you, you, you come for something and you want it. But I, but I think it's, it's wise.
Well, I would say if the commission is willing to indulge delay, I'm more than willing to actually set up the meetings with city planning and see if we can't get to an accord.
And I would appreciate you greatly. And I could say for myself, and I think the commission, the sentiment of the commission is likely that we want to see something super good. So is there a motion from Commissioner Madison?
Please.
Please.
Thank you. So my first thing would be, how, how long has Pittsburgh One been online? One, the PLI?
One stop.
One stop. Yeah, it's been on since like two thousand nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
Yeah, so we still don't have a cost of how it, or what it could, it could be changed. We don't even understand that's been going on. Well, what I'm saying is it's, it's been active for five years or so, but we still don't know what we possibly can do to change anything on in that process.
Can I?
Apparently, just ask it.
Could I respond to that?
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, okay. So in, let me find my notes here for this. We talked about it in the briefing, but I, I would like to, to go back through. So in 2023, so that was after the pandemic and a few years, you know, a couple years after the pandemic and four years into using the One Stop System. The city got help, worked with the Hines Endowments and the Pittsburgh Foundation and hired the Thomas Consulting Group to conduct a substantial detailed survey, survey of all of our customers, of our One Stop customers. And that survey revealed a number of substantial concerns that customers regularly encountered, many of which aligned with concerns that the One Stop staff had raised during interviews and surveys regarding the permitting system and associated processes. The most commonly raised concerns with DCP reviews, so these are zoning reviews largely, were the lack of staffing and need for those staffers to be retained and experienced, the difficulty using the online portal, and the timeliness of reviews. While the timeliness of the code reviews was a noted concern, customers held the staff's courtesy and respectfulness and knowledge and expertise in high regard. The report did not raise concerns about timeliness of issuing decisions or deeming applications complete. The following the survey in 2024, the city released a major update to the permitting system, which, so this is just last year. system, which, so this is just last year, which included improvements as recommended by the consultant and leadership team to address concerns heard from the customers. In 2024, the zoning and development review division was able to implement an overhaul of our staffing and our organization in order to address the staffing, the staffing level concerns. Zoning reviews have a service level agreement, which is our maximum timeline for review, set within the permitting system for each type of review or process. On average, reviews are completed 14 days ahead of, of our deadline for basic reviews and 29 days ahead of the deadline for advanced zoning reviews. The average review time for zoning applications is 18 business days and the median time is 13 business days. So I just want to, I understand folks have concerns and, and I want to say we're engaged in another process, kind of closing, making another round of updates to the application to improve it for customers. I mentioned the customer advisor program that we've been piloting in 2025 that we're going to launch in 2026. And I mentioned that we're working again on the zoning board data. The, one of the concerns, like I said earlier, is there's a perception that it can take months. And a lot of times those months are caught up in the having to do multiple iterations of submitting an application, being told that there are issues, then having to go back, coordinate, getting your team together, prepare updated plans and then submit those back to staff. And that on average is what takes 30 days or more. If we add in these additional timelines and deadlines in this way, it, it's not factoring for the staff time, it's ending up being picked up where we're going to have to deny applications to avoid having them deemed approved when they're not ready because we're just waiting for an applicant to submit it. So it's going to create pressure and anxiety for applicants. It's going to create pressure and anxiety for staff and it's a solution in search of a problem that we don't have. We, we do have those, those challenges. We, I know for a fact, the incoming administration has a substantial interest in making their own imprint and changes to permitting, to the timing, to the one stop system. We're here, we're willing and able and eager to get to work with the new administration on that. That's going to, that's going to be coming down the road in a few months. And we'd be similarly willing to, I, I would imagine that the new administration would want to work with city council members in that process as well. And I think that like as we're doing with the North Shore folks on the signage, a collaborative approach where we're all in the room together would work a lot better than us cooking something up on our own, never talking to each other about it and then kind of sending it over.
Commissioner Mazza?
And well, no, I appreciate that. And, you know, from, from where I come from, where, who I work with, my organization and the people that I deal with on a day to day basis, and I was with the National Developer yesterday at an event, that's the, the big concern. It's like, it's not clear on either side that that's what I believe. City Council brought it up to try to maybe push or nudge people to move a little quicker to try to get this thing done because this has been languishing for years. And I've known you, Mr. Lehman, for how many years? 17, 18 years probably? And it's the same thing over and over. So we have to get to find a common ground here. And I, I agree with Mr. Carter about, you know, to keep working on this thing and keep it moving forward. But I have one other question on the efficiencies graph, okay? And I work with numbers all the time, but so it says that it goes down, okay? And I'm not playing a blame game or anything like that. I'm just trying to understand where you, how you came to that result. So you said that it's gotten better, but has there been less applications to create the number of efficiency?
Sure. No, that's a, a fair clarification. I didn't have the number of applications in the graph. I can follow up with that, but my understanding is that our applications have been pretty stable across the last four or five years since COVID.
Yeah, because I, I understand, I think up till July, there probably were 87,000 permits give, you know, release and I don't know what the number is right now, but I just want to make sure that we're looking at this in the right way, that we are actually moving in that direction because that won't be fair to the process.
Yeah, the, the, the chart was the number of cases that have had to go to the zoning board. So our goal is to have it be zero, which means that everybody's complying with the code and the zoning board folks can just come in and have coffee and leave. But we know that there are going to be variances, there are no, we know there are going to be special exceptions, but if we can get those case numbers down, it's cheaper for the applicants, it's cheaper for the city, everybody's happier.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing. So if, you know, we were in the situation where Mr. Lehman would have to deny applications just, you know, to make sure that clock, clocks are, and, and times are met, that's going to present more ZBA appeals and potentially legislation, you know, up, up the chain. So that's, you know, that's not something that will create efficiency.
So what I think that I'm hearing, and if that's the case, I think that what I'm hearing is that we would motion to give more time and that we would ask that there be a cooperative and collaborative, that means rolling up sleeves, helping you to understand the data. And then, Mr. Lehman, you, you having an opportunity to, we'll share what's currently going on a little bit differently for, for, for an application to really build itself around its goal. And, and I, and I think that would be the goal of both. So I, I, I'm not going to make the motion, but I'm going to move for the suggested motion, which would be some time and some delay to help that happen.
Yeah, I mean, we're always willing and eager to collaborate with council members. I think we have fundamental differences on this. I think any deemed approval system is going to end up in a situation where we're going to have to deny applications in basically prematurely in order to avoid having them deemed approved. So it creates another bureaucracy step that we don't currently have. In other, in the NPC, in other municipalities, these provisions apply to subdivisions. If there's an interest in looking at it just for subdivisions for Pittsburgh, I'm, I'm open to that. I don't, I don't have the same kinds of concerns because it's a similar application type that has a very regular process. And if a subdivision doesn't have iterative reviews with sending things back very often, it's usually you have a surveyor comes in, they know what they're doing, they submit the subdivision. If it takes us more than 30 days or whatever, fine. But, you know, the, I, I'm not worried about it because I know that we can do it. And I know that it works. I, I want to work with the council person, I want to work with Sean, I like Sean. But I, I want to know, I want to have some, some understanding of what we're working toward. I, I, there are certain things we're not going to be willing to, to come back to the commission with.
Okay. Well, so, so let me just say this. I don't want to talk about maybe what we, I, I, I think the meeting of the minds here is really going to be about the main objective, which is shortening the amount of time. And I, and I think that there's education on maybe one side and then there is desire on the opposite side. Like the, the proposal, the bill is trying to achieve reducing time. If there's an education component that helps to provide data and maybe there is a, you know, maybe a misconception that this is happening versus that and here's how this really goes in, what has been missed here has been communication. What has been missed here is the opportunity to, to figure out what's really going on and what is desired to, to happen. So I don't necessarily want to put guardrails. I want communication to occur and I want us to be able to see if we can collectively work together to, to achieve the same thing. If you come back and, and there's some good, great. If you come back and there's no good, well, that stinks, but it is what it is, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I just make sure that I'm hearing you 100%?
Please and thank you.
You are asking that this be continued, let's say, for some sort of report back to the commission by the end of the year, some, some point, some date in time.
Yes.
And that the goal, the commission is, what you're asking is collaboration between the council sponsors, I guess, or the offices, staff.
Yes.
Collaboration with staff to achieve a goal, which is improving the timeliness of permitting.
You got it.
Madam Chair, can I ask one question? I agree with what he's saying is, can that come back to briefing? So we get briefed on it before we go to hearing and action or do we have to go to straight to?
Yeah, I think we'll.
I'm envisioning a, like a.
I'd like to get briefed on it.
Yeah.
See what it actually is.
I think they can bring us a report. That way we can understand what has changed and then, and then we can vote on it. Well, I'll let you two do what hadn't happened, collaborate for a minute.
That does seem free.
There we go. Oh, that's.
Motion from the, the motion from the commission will be something along the lines of return by the end of the year with a report on our collaboration and discussions.
Correct.
Okay. And is that, I'd see the face that Sean is making, I want to make sure that we're.
Late November?
I was thinking late November.
Okay.
Like Thanksgiving?
Well, no, you don't meet that.
I, I'm concerned about time, just with the cities, with my own, my own schedule.
First commission meeting, hearing in December?
The third.
I think it is.
Second. That's what I was.
Okay. Is that fair and reasonable?
I, I'm going to try. I'm not sure that we're going to have a chance to have a lot of.
Well, so why?
I'm facilitating the North Shore.
Why don't we?
Which we've already are in our third meeting and going into more. So we're working hard to get a collaborative, a collaborative approach to the commission on that.
Okay.
I'm just worried about, about the timing. I know you're, I understand you have a concern about timing for your, who you're representing as well.
Here's what I think. I, I, I think that, yes.
I can do December 2nd. Let's just.
December 2nd is wonderful.
Yeah, there's collaboration.
Collaboration.
I'll do my best. I mean, I'll collaborate, I just, what I'm saying.
Hey, boys, we're going to collaborate, whether we like it or not. That's what the motion is, okay? So somebody make a motion and let's, let's. Oh, Commissioner Dick, hi there.
Yeah, I would propose a motion to continue this until, to December, the first meeting, planning commission meeting in December to foster collaboration.
Okay. And that is the motion. Thank you. We're going to do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton-Fulk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gammie?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Mazza?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neill?
Aye.
Commissioner Kintini, thank you.
Aye.
Commissioner Kintini, thank you. Commissioner Ruiz?
Aye.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Thank you. Do you both feel good? Okay, excellent. That's, that's, that's a plus. All right, thank you so much. So the final agenda item is E, that is the director's report.
Well, we've still got another bill.
Oh, whoops.
Are we, no, I thought we were.
Are you proposing to do the same thing on?
We, we didn't hear 1926. Now, we could present it, then do the whole thing and I have all of the various things that you heard in the briefing and Sean has his presentation.
My apologies, I kind of thought we were taking.
We're holding both of them together.
Might we please?
Yeah.
So I, I think you do need to hear testimony on it to see if there's anybody here to testify. We can certainly, if there are folks here that do want to testify on that particular bill, I would be willing to go forward and give a, a quick summary. But if, if there aren't, then I think we can probably just move forward.
All right, that's fair and reasonable. Do we have anyone? Because we don't have anyone, no, on online? Thank you. Okay, well, it looks like we don't have anyone online. Commissioners, do we all agree that we're going to treat the Council Bill 2025-1926 the same? Okay, fair and reasonable. We'll delay on both. Thank you so much.
I have a very important director's report.
Yes.
Are you ready to move to director's report?
We are absolutely.
I thought you might be. I would like to introduce Mohit Rao, who has been on our staff for a year? Yeah, a little more than, 1.25 years. Who is now working with the codes and commissions team with Kate and so that will be working more frequently with the commission. And Christian Johnson, who just joined us last week, 1.25 weeks, who is also going to be working with this team. And we're happy to get staffed up. And I think, I don't know if I mentioned it, but Mr. Joe Fraker, who's you all know and has been with our team, was recently promoted to principal planner for the team.
Fantastic. Well, congratulations to all of you.
Thanks, everybody.
And welcome to the new person.
Yes, and welcome the two new folks. Yes, well, welcome.
One's been here for a while.
Yes. This is true. All right, any, any commissioners have anything to say? Does that complete your director's report?
Indeed.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All in favor? Aye. All right, folks, have a great rest of your day.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, all right, all right.